Call to order the school committee meeting, May twenty second, two thousand twenty five. Steph, will you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'm just going to do roll because Sue is not here. Mr. Hatch?
Here.
Ms. Mastrocola, Mrs. Mastrocola?
Here.
Mr. Whitbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Fisher and Mr. Serena, both here, so. Starting off with the report of the school committee chair. Kind of a little bit, not really long, but there's a couple, there's some things I want to say. I wanted to discuss the town meeting the other night. If you weren't able to attend, I haven't been following the budget, budget process that starts in January. Town meeting gave us a million dollars plus an additional seven hundred and fifty K in enrichment. And we continue to expand the enrichment programs. This doesn't, this, this doesn't include Schedule nineteen, so I've said this before. We have our operating budget, then we have a Schedule nineteen, which has benefits and everything up rolled into that. So we, we, we get an increase to our operating budget. It's been the practice to put that money into our budget every year going forward. If you come in to a little bit of money, you don't take out a thirty year mortgage. Free cash is a one time, one time use. I'm sorry, I completely lost my, what, yeah. I was going to say Schedule nineteen insurance, none of the benefit costs for the staff are charged to the operating budget. And the town picks up ninety percent of the insurance for the employees. Health insurance increased by sixteen point seven percent this year. So that's another increase of like one point one million that, that we're talking about. So as a district, we value our relationship with the town and understand that there aren't unlimited funds to fund everything the community needs. When we get an increase to our operating budget, it's been our practice to put that money into our budget every year going forward. If we come into a little bit of money, we're not going to just throw it into the salaries and things like that. We need to look at where we need to put things. So that's why when you talk about free cash, if you take from free cash, that's a one time, that's a one time use. And I think the problem with that is if you take that and you use it and you put it in the salaries, you're just going to have another problem the following year. So we're pretty good about that. And if you look at other districts, Mrs. Andrews done a great job. If you look at other districts that are closing schools, laying off teachers, things like that, I think we've done a good job. And this brings me to, there was a question, will we be able to service the district without more funds? We will never answer no to this question. We have teachers, parents and support staff who always put the students first. We, we, and we will never suggest to parents that their students are not going to receive the best education. As a district, we can provide them. That's our focus. We will focus on student needs with the money we have, and it will always be about the students. And we value the, the student, the teacher relationships, the parents, our administrators. So we're not, what I, what I think I'm trying to say in the first part with the budget is we're pretty frugal with our money. And, and we do what's best by, by the district, by the students. So I also want to touch on social media a little bit. I know I always talk about this. But again, if you have a school related questions or concerns, come to a meeting, contact me, contact the board. Social media gets allotted these things wrongs, these things wrong, and we can correct them. It brings me to chapter seventy money. I know I said this before, but chapter seventy money can only be used for schools, nothing else. I've seen people saying the chapter seventy money is going elsewhere. That's not possible. It might go to benefits for the teachers, it might go to something else related to school, but it all goes to schools. So I just want to be clear on that. And just another issue, the buses are unveiled, the buses are moved. If you have a bus issue, please call us. Don't call the town manager, don't call selectmen, call us, we'll handle it. We won't tell you that, we're going to take care of it unless we can. This took a little bit of time, but it got taken care of thanks to the people up here. So and lastly, I want to say something. As a district, we're making substantial progress. Some things you can't see, some things you can see, like the athletics, the improvement at the middle high school, discipline being a focus. But there's things you might not be able to see, like the culture building at the vets led by Mr. Mondello and Mrs. Putry. The leadership at the high school, middle school with Dr. Scuzzarella and her team. And Belmonte will be under a new principal, and we're excited about that. So we have a lot on our plate and a lot of work ahead of us, but we're facing these challenges and we're getting better. So I'll turn it over to anyone who wants anything to say.
I got a couple of things here. Me too, about the social media, we see, everyone loves the stats, the stats. You know, we're two hundred and fifty eighth here and tenth over here. Stats, they really don't tell the story of what goes on inside these schools at all. And I know we say it a lot, just this last week, we had, last night, they had the band concert, seventh, sixth, seventh and eighth grade. It was, I've been going to them since, I don't know, for five or six years now, since my kids have moved through the system here. And last night was probably the best one I've been to in a long time because it's amazing how much they, when they go from the spring, the fall concert to the, or the winter concert to the spring concert, it's amazing the difference, absolutely amazing. So Mr. Jones and Mr. Smith did a great job, the kids were incredible.
Last night, the winter or the spring?
Well, last night was the spring, yeah, I know, it was a little hard to tell, but it was the spring. And they also, they won some awards. I'm not sure exactly what the awards were, but they won two awards at the, at Canterbury Lake. They had a, a demonstration at Canterbury Lake or a competition. That was for the seventh and eighth graders. Then they got to go to Canterbury Lake after in the pouring rain, of course. But the sixth grade also goes to the Fisher Cats game and, and does the national anthem, you know? Student government day, you know, great success. We had a great time, the first time it's been back since before COVID. The trip to DC, same thing, first time it's been back since well before COVID. And the kids had an incredible time, there's Mr. Mike who, Ms. Bader, and I don't want to leave anybody out here. Mr. Fusco, Mr. Corin, Ms. Graffum, Nurse Jess and Ms. DeChristophero. It was just a great group of teachers, you know, it's a big task taking somebody else's kids to out of state and for those types of field trips. Kids were well behaved, teachers were awesome, kids had a great time. And of course, today, I was lucky enough to be at the school and they were doing a, a project that they've been working on for a month. It was, I think mostly seniors and juniors, but it looked like mostly seniors, the shock tank. Yeah, it was, it was absolutely awesome. As a matter of fact, Olivia, where are you, back there? Okay, so she was doing, she came up with the, her and her group came up with the parking poof, correct? So when somebody parks in like one of the teacher spots, you just take this thing and whip it at the car and the car disappears to a different spot. So it was pretty cool. They got an offer from Ms. Caproni, was it?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, so, yeah, it was really good. Some of the ideas these kids have were just, it was incredible and, and the teachers were the sharks and you made offers and so it was really good. So what I'm trying to get at is, forget about what you see with the stats and stuff. We got tons, I mean, we got the same amount of kids going to college as Linfield and Melrose and everybody around us. These kids, you know, we're not, this is, I get it, Saugus High, the stigma is with us, but guess what? We're not like, you know, just going one through twelve, okay through twelve, and then the kids are going to work at McDonald's. It doesn't work that way. We got some kids that are incredible here. We had kids go to Harvard, kids go to B C.
Yeah, we, we got Ivy League schools this year.
You know what, and then what I say is, the smart kids go to the community college first and get their, get their credits and move on. It's so much cheaper, you know? So, yeah, so I'm, I'm really proud of what we've had going on here. And, you know, I'm not saying it's because of us at all. I'm saying it's because a lot of changes get made over the last five, six, seven years and changes for the good. And all those changes help shape what's going on now. So, and all right, I'm gonna, sorry, I don't mean to ramble on here, but. One other thing about those, those, those scores that we see online, okay? We keep getting kids coming in that speak zero English at all. And it's, it's fine, but the state's making us educate them in classrooms, you know, in general classrooms with, you know? So these teachers have to find a way to communicate with these kids. And these kids also have to take the MCAS. So anybody who comes here has to take the MCAS. So, you know, it's not the teachers or it's not the staff, it's not the, it's not the administration. It's a, it's a whole bunch of things thrown into one that those test scores reflect. But the test scores don't reflect what's actually going on inside the school with these kids. So that's all I can say.
Perfect. Moving on to Mr. Hatch and with the superintendent's report.
Yeah, I'm actually going to add a little bit to that because you, you mentioned, Mr. Whittrick mentioned the students and success and how moving on. We, we have a lot of alumni that actually come back and work for us. I mean, if you go through some of the schools, especially for me, seeing a lot of students from the past, teaching, working in different jobs in the school system, which is really nice in some ways. When you find out they're fifty years old, it's not as easy. So it's, it's great to see the alumni coming back because it does talk a lot about the pride that our students have had all along in being part of the community. So we do have that. We do have a couple of events coming up. Next week, we have the Unsung Hero Awards. That's going to be on Wednesday at six P M. That's in the complex in the high school cafeteria area that spills out into the, the courtyard. So that's on Wednesday night at six. On Thursday, we have our shadow day. That's different than student government day where they follow around non municipal, not, not boards and whatnot. So but there's a lot going on. And then once that happens, once next week comes and goes, it's end of the year activity after end of the year activity. So it's going to be a busy time, but exciting time, and the students, I'm sure, are going to talk about that. The other thing I did want to mention is that, as Mr. Serena mentioned, the enrichment program was supported by the town meeting. We're doing it a little differently moving forward. So they approved a hundred thousand dollars for the Belmonte, and they would also get any of the carryover, which would probably be about a hundred and fifty thousand from last year, and that will go to their program. The middle school as well got two fifty, the high school a hundred, and the vets seventy five. It dealt with the size of the program. But we do have programs already starting and getting worked out for the summer. I, I talked to the Belmonte coordinator today, and she's got an enrichment academy, academic enrichment academy that she's going to have at the Belmonte towards the end of the summer. And there, and at the middle school, they're going to do academic boot camp at the middle school. And I think that's towards the end of the summer. I don't have the dates or the details on it, but those are very academic and making sure when you talk about, when people talk about trying to catch up and trying to make sure students stay on pace, those, those kind of programs really help. So we have those coming up. So that's pretty much, I'm looking at what else. You guys covered everything about the budget so far. That's what I have for tonight.
Moving on to report from Saugus High School student representatives. Just state your name and class.
Hi, I'm Brandon Verone. I'm here representing the sophomore tenth grade class at the Saugus High School. I'm the class president of our class of twenty twenty seven board. I'm joined here today by Audrina Giglio, who's our historian. We just want to announce some of our current and upcoming fundraisers we're doing. Currently, we have a Double Good Popcorn fundraiser going on, which, for those who don't know, it's a completely online fundraiser where people from our class can create these online pop up stores where other people can go in and buy popcorn that gets delivered right to you. So if you want popcorn, you can come see us, we have the link here today. You can also go on our Instagram at Saugus Class of Twenty Twenty Seven, and the link should be on there. And then next, on June seventh, nine A M. from one P M., we're having a car wash at the senior center. So we encourage everyone to come, stop by, donate.
What time, what time's cow wash?
Nine A M. to one P M.
Nine A M. to one, okay.
So we encourage everyone to come, get your car washed. And so, yeah, that's all the announcements we have for today. If you'd like any updates on everything we're doing, we post, we, we would suggest you follow our social media. We post everything on our Instagram, which again is at Saugus Class of Twenty Twenty Seven. And that's all I have for you today, thank you for listening.
What is this Instagram you talk of?
Be careful.
I don't know, explain it.
Don't, don't, don't waste your time.
My heart just stopped.
We got the senior class, class of twenty twenty five.
Hi, everyone, my name is Olivia Chason. I'm from the senior class of twenty twenty five, and I'm here for the last time to give the state of the class as we have five days left. Um, I just wanted to give like an overall update of our upcoming events. So Friday, May thirtieth, we have our like official senior walkout where we walk through the school and like just say goodbye to old teachers and classmates. And then that following Sunday, which is June first, we have a banquet with Caloon. It's going to be provided at the school. And we also have a hypnotist and a movie on the stadium turf. And then on that Monday, we have Field Day, which is run by the gym department. So Ms. Luciere, Mr. Cox and Mr. McLean. And that is followed with lunch from Reason Gaines. And then on Tuesday, we are going to Sky Zone as a class for like just a fun like event. And then that following night, we'll hopefully go to the Red Sox game if the weather permits. And then the following day, we have grad practice, followed by the elementary school walkthroughs to say goodbye to like our old elementary school teachers and.
Can I tell you, they love that.
I love it too.
They love it.
That's like what I'm most excited for.
My wife comes home, her eyes are red, they love it. It's like, because they've had you.
Yes.
It's like.
I'm so excited for that.
And you're in the class for the year, right? It's not like you're moving from class to class. That's awesome.
I like that too. And then that night, we also have awards night, which is like where all seniors receive their scholarships, which is really cool, I think, because a lot of Saugus alumni provide scholarships to current students. And Thursday, we have prom at Cruzport Gloucester. And we were able to get, last year they did school buses, this year we got coach buses. And they're from Joseph's Transportation, if anyone needs a coach bus. And then Friday, we have graduation. So everyone's super excited. There are a lot of, I know Mr. Whitbridge was saying that like there are good colleges that come out of Saugus High.
Absolutely, yeah.
The class president that's usually standing here with me, Hannah Duong, is going to Ivy League, U Penn. Treasure is going to Northeastern, and my vice president is going to University of South Carolina. So there are a lot of good.
Where are you going?
Bryant University in Rhode Island.
That's a great school.
So.
Cam's going there too, isn't he?
Yes, he is. So there are a lot of good that comes out of Saugus High, it's what you make of it.
Good stuff.
You know what's great about Saugus High and really is you guys always come and give back to the community.
Yeah.
We love that. Like, you know, we'd love for you guys to come in more often, like when you get back from school, senior year, freshman year, and, you know, come and tell us about it.
Yeah, I'm excited and I feel like everyone is. And thank you guys for having me, for all these meetings and letting me update you guys.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
I lost my agenda. Next, we get the, under new business, under new business, we get the finance report, and we've got Mrs. Andrews, so update us.
Thank you, Mr. Serena. So you have the full finance packet in front of you, as usual. As of April thirtieth, twenty twenty five, Saugus Public Schools has expended and encumbered twenty four million, four hundred, twenty nine thousand, eight hundred, seventy seven dollars and seventy cents. As you go through the lines, you'll see we have about thirty percent of the budget overall remaining. Big chunk of it is in salaries, salaries that will be paid out in May and June. There are a couple of lines that are in deficit, particularly substitutes. Because substitutes is really one big bucket, and we have to allocate it to the schools and then break it down by regular day of special ed. That's a DUSI requirement, so we do our best to allocate it, but then it depends on, on what happens. So you will see that as part of the budget amendment. You have your grant balances, snapshot in time as of April twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, and spending down those twenty four grants that remain, very, very little left, as you can tell. And the district is working on spending down the twenty twenty five grants. We can only carry fifteen percent over. So by the, by the end of August for some grants, June for other grants. So by the, by the end of August for some grants, June for other grants, you're going to see those balances at zero. The revolving accounts. This is as of March 31, 2025. That's a quarterly report I give you. This is a very interesting report, because of course, the fund balance must be positive, which all fund balances are. We have no concerns. But this report really tells you a story. When you look at Circuit Breaker, you see that our fund balance at the beginning of the year was $2,283,432. Please ignore the revenue for now. But when you look at the expense of $1.9 million, almost $2 million, and the encumbrances of $781,000, it means that we've over expended what we carried over, by about $400,000, which is what our request was. So we got a few more placements this year, and we had to dip into Circuit Breaker. You look at McKinney-Bento. That's traditionally been a problem to fund. And as I remind you, that reimbursement is nearly two years behind, okay? Because just completed the end-of-year report audit for the prior school year for '24, and then we get that reimbursement in July. But when you look at the the fund balance of $67,000, that's been expended in May. As of May 21, that's been fully expended. I went and checked. However, we have some money remaining in the operating budget. And hopefully, so long as nothing happens in the next three weeks, for the first time ever, we may not have need to transfer money to that line. So we finally caught up. It only took, I don't know, five or seven years, I think, but we finally made it. The Emergency Assistant Shelter Fund, we charged two English-language learner teachers to that amount. That fund, that grant, is really exactly for what it states, Emergency Assistant Shelter. So a lot of those students are migrants, and we hired two ELL teachers. That balance will almost be fully expended. We'll have about $65,000 left to carry over into next year to put towards one of the teachers. The rest of gift accounts, cafeteria revolving account. That program is at pretty much break even. So when you look at the revenue and the expenses, it seems the revenue's a little less, the expense is a little more. There's a deficit of about $239,000. But that's because in the fund balance carried over on July 1, some of those expenses were for the prior year, which is how fund accounting works. But as far as this actual school year, we are pretty much at break even. Again, that's another success story for us. A lot of years, we were trying to cover deficits. You'll notice that kids come first. We're back to being in the, in the positive. So, you know, we did need to increase user fees slightly, and that helped tremendously. What was the last one? Athletic revolving. You'll see that expenses are outpacing revenue. However, there is still some funding available in the transportation line, in the officials' line, in in the operating budget. So hopefully, that will alleviate some of the expenses that have been charged to the revolving, so that, so that we can carry over a little bit of a cushion. That's the revolving account. You have in front of you Budget Amendment Number Three, and it's pretty lengthy. It's over 17 pages long. So when you look at it, the first section is pretty much a little bit of turnover since February, since the last budget amendment, and a lot of unpaid days. Then we have already began to do a course close, so to speak, to wind down the year. We have less than three weeks of school left. So the principals came in, they put in, they had their staff put in all their requisitions, and we're at the point now where we're starting to wind down the year. The money that we we reallocated from those lines has gone in to support a few things. Some home hospital tutors that were needed. We needed extra money in that. Contractual services cleaning, that was for another snowstorm that occurred after the last budget amendment, because we did not have our operations assistant in place at that time. And also special education, pupil transportation. Again, if you look at the number we needed, it's almost what we've asked for. So these all tie in together. I hope you'll vote affirmatively for Budget Amendment Number Three, so that we can reallocate those lines, pay the remaining bills, and begin to close the year. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I just, on the budget amendment, do you, how, because I know when we close the year, we're going to see some more, how many more budget amendments do you see across the year?
You will, in my opinion, you will definitely see two, possibly three.
Okay.
So there'll be another one after the final big payroll.
Okay.
Towards the end of June. And then, as you know, I like to do what I call the closeout budget amendment, which is just clean up those lines and make sure that everything matches what was actually spent. And that's just a tool. You know, we were asked about that at Finance Committee, when people were asking. So that when you look at the revised budget, it's actually what we spent.
Okay. Any other questions?
So all this is unspent on, from the Saugus High School? Scholastic awards, graduation expenses, academic support materials?
Are you looking at the budget amendment?
Yes.
Okay. So they went through and encumbered all the requisitions for for graduation and Awards Night. And so what's left over is being reallocated.
Okay, well, I guess what I'm asking is, so there's, what, 20 line items here? So those are all unspent monies that we're going to reallocate?
I'm sorry, Mr. Whitbridge, I didn't quite get that. Did we spend the money?
Are we, is this money that's not spent, and then we're going to reallocate it just out of those 20 line items?
These are the balances. These are the balances. And we're going to reallocate it to support special ed transportation, because those costs have, you know, as the added district placements go up, the transportation follows.
Right. I just see a couple of large balances, and I'm just curious, it's okay to give those up and reallocate them instead of using them where they're supposed to be?
Yeah. You know, we went back and they, it wasn't spent, so we take it back.
So I think I get another question on this. So when we do the end-of-the-year close, we won't, we won't see some of these, like the scholastic awards, that'll be done, correct? Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that I'm looking at this right. Okay.
So maybe what's going to happen is after this budget amendment, those lines? Not the savings lines, but the expense lines that have been reallocated, the balance will be zero. And if there's an emergency, we can certainly support that at this time.
It's unspent. And then we need it for the back.
Sure.
That's what they're allocating it for. So a lot of this is special ed. Yeah, you can see it right on the back page. Any other questions? It's up to you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve Budget Amendment Number Three to reallocate savings from turnovers and unpaid days to fund need and added district tuition, special education transportation, snow clearing services, custodial supplies, professional development, and other lines.
Chair seconds. Any questions, any discussion?
I almost just said here, yes.
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 No.
Yes. Moving on to food service management, management contract renewal, Whitson Year Two. Would you like that?
So Whitson's, this will be year two of the contract. It was a one-year contract with auction to renew in year two and three. So this requires a vote of the committee. As, as is in the contract and is customary and usual, the management fee and the administrative fee only increase by the Consumer Price Index. So that is, in March, was 3.8%. So that is what they are allowed to increase, the management fee and the administrative fee. I'd like to remind everyone, this is a totally self-sufficient operation. The school lunch reimbursements cover the entire program. So this is not something that is coming out of the operating budget or any other school funds. This comes out of federal and state funds. We don't pay a dime of this.
So just a quick question. So for year two of the contract, it only increased like $2,900 bucks, $2,943?
That's right. That's correct.
Okay. Any questions?
Can I just offer a few things about Whitson's?
Sure.
Just because I think the public should know. So I received an email on April 30. Whitson's is going to proactively remove all artificial dyes from their menu. So they are taking out eight of the most common food dyes that have been known to cause issues for children. That means that they are going to get products without dyes. So in the beginning, if there are children out there that like a particular snack, it may not be available at the beginning of the school year, but they are, they're hoping that they will have it. Okay, I'm thinking Doritos. I don't even know if they sell Doritos, but I know that has a lot of different colors in it. They're going to try to find the comparable alternative. And so they're working with their vendors on that. But I want parents to be aware, parents and guardians, that is going to be a little change at the beginning of the year. But that is coming down the line anyway, through, through the federal government. They're just going to be proactive, so they get ahead of it and build those relationships with the vendors and get those products.
Excellent. So.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve year two of the Whitson's contract.
Chair seconds. Can we do a roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Just moving on to discussion of cost containment for the FY '26 approved.
You got to do the school choice first.
Oh.
Yep.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Committee discussion and vote on school choice. Now.
I can, let me read it.
Yeah.
Because I, because I know we did this the last couple of years.
Because sometime, yes is no, and no is yes, or something like this thing.
So the inter-district school choice law requires all districts to accept incoming school choice students unless the school committee votes not to participate or votes to limit the number of incoming students in particular grades. So the school committee has, in the past, voted not to participate.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I've been working on this for six years. I haven't written it right. Ready? I'd like to make a motion that the school committee affirmatively vote that Saugus remain a non-school choice district.
Chair seconds. Can we do a roll? Because this might, this might want to come, this might come back.
Yes.
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 Yes, which means no.
Yes. Sorry, I had to do that.
Update on enrollment policy. So we have enrollment policy. We, it's a student admission policy, it's Policy JF. We've discussed this, and we just have to make a, a change in the wording. So really, we'll probably just vote on it to change the wording, to take something out. But that's all it is. And it's, it's really taken one line item out that was requested by a group. So you want to vote on it?
Anybody have a chance to look at it?
We can table it to next meeting.
We can table it to that meeting.
We'll table it to the next meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table this until the next meeting.
Chair seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
This will be tabled. Discussion of cost containment for FY '26 approved, budget by town meeting. Just, any discussion? I really don't think we've discussed it till we look at it.
No, you. We're not there yet.
Yeah, we'll move that discussion.
I want to hear some suggestions from the principals as well, you know?
Understood. Yep.
So we'll move, we'll pass that one. Next, we have a schedule, schedule a calendar, a schedule a calendar for school committee meeting for 2026.
Yeah, I drew together, sorry, Mr. Chair, I put together, and you can look at this, and you don't have to vote on this now, but we want to make sure for the next school year, you have a school committee calendar. I just kind of tried to put it together. Just take a look at it. This doesn't have to get voted on tonight. You can move anything you want around. The meetings that we have for, for starting in July.
Yeah, so just so everyone knows, what we usually do is we usually do the second, fourth, Thursday of the month. So we do not have to vote on this.
No, you don't have to. Absolutely. Take a look and see.
Take a look at it. You guys decide.
And there also has to be a meeting, was it two days after Election Day?
Oh, there does. Yeah, I think there is one. By chance, there was one. I'll double check. Mr. Chair, everybody can feel free to, you know, add anything.
Any questions on that?
No.
So we're going to move to approval of bills dated May 22, 2025, in the amount
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Acceptance of a donation from the Veterans PTO in the amount of $3,619.50. Two checks to cover the cost of the Boston Children's Museum and transportation. Is there anyone from the Vets PTO here that wants to talk on it? Yeah, come on, get up. Come on. Do you remember the big phone at the museum when you went there?
You ask that every single time.
Sounds like remember the big phone. I used to do state.
Jack, I'm the president of the PTO at the Vets.
Oh, well, thank you.
Yes, no.
You guys have a great culture at the Vets.
Thank you. Thank you. We spend a lot of time there, so it's great to see everything that we're putting into it and seeing the teachers enjoy it, but also see the kids get to benefit from it. And part of that is their field trips that they have very much enjoyed.
So did you go as a chaperone, too?
I did not. My child is not in kindergarten. He's in first grade. So we actually just went to the Franklin Park Zoo on Tuesday, and they absolutely loved it. Thank goodness it was not cut out. So it was a perfect day.
Okay, talking about field trips, what I want to bring back, and you guys, parents, whoever, is the Freedom Trail. Remember when we used to do the Freedom Trail?
No.
Yeah.
Come on.
First the phone, and now, does anyone remember the phone at the museum? Does anyone remember this phone he's talking about?
Yes.
No? No, you don't remember the phone? Joe, do you remember the phone at the museum that he's talking about? He says there's a giant phone.
There used to be a giant phone at the museum aside the children's, do you remember?
Where was it?
Yeah, you could climb on it. You could, yes.
I don't think it's there anymore.
It's not there anymore.
Just the bubble room.
I don't think it's there anymore.
Imagine bringing, imagine bringing a rotary, a giant rotary phone back, the kids wouldn't know what to do.
They wouldn't know what it is.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's not.
Oh, we did, motion to approve?
Chair seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Acceptance of a donation from Belmonte PTO donating $5,090.45 to cover the cost of field trip buses, to include not. to cover the cost of field trip buses to include Noshore and Museum of Science. Any, um, PTO member from Belmont D here? Okay.
Motion to approve?
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
So, um, this is not an agenda, but due to timing and stuff, we, um, permission slips that need to go out, we're gonna vote on it tonight. Um, the acceptance of a donation from Wynn for $9,000 for buses for the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade field trips to Canterbury Lake and, um, money to go to their field days.
Motion to approve?
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain, that's right. Good, thank you. We have approval of school committee meeting minutes for May 13th, 2025, executive session.
Motion to approve?
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Approval of school committee meeting minutes, May 13th, 2025, open session.
Motion to approve?
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, we go to our favorite part of the show, public comment. Do we have anyone for public comment? No, Carrie, you always go first, come on. See if I can, see if I can remember the address. Hi, Carrie Hogan?
Carrie Hogan, 11 Maple Street. Okay. I know Mr. Whitridge said that we shouldn't pay, whoop, pay attention to some of the statistics that were shared on social media, I agree. But I do have some statistics that I think you guys all know about, but the parents and the people in this community need to know about. Which will lead to the two points that I'm going to make. Um, last year, there was a youth risk behavior survey for the middle school and high school and although I'm not gonna get into a lot of the questions, some of the pertinent information that was retrieved from that report, um, applies to my point. So, let me give you some examples. For example, students have been threatened or injured with a weapon on school property in the past 12 months. In the high school, that was nine, in the middle school, that was 20. Students didn't feel safe going to school. In the high school, that was 3%, in the middle school, that was 14%. Kids reporting feeling sad, hopeless almost every day. In the high school, that's 21%, in the middle school, that's 20%. Engaged in self-harm, in the high school, that's 25 kids, and in the middle school, that's 76 kids. Seriously considering suicide, in the high school, that's 14 kids, in the middle school, that is 57 kids. Students reported being touched in a sexual way against their will at school. In the high school, that was 15. In the middle school, it was 34 kids in the past three months to when that report, survey was administered.
Can, can I ask you a question? Was the survey administered through the school?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And they, sorry, and they shared the results?
Okay, thank you.
Students that report being a member of the gang, of a gang, high school seven, middle school 11, been in a fight, high school 10, middle school 32. Another important thing is that 48.5% of the middle school students feel that the school staff enforce bullying and harassment policies never or rarely. 42.9% of students in the middle school would not go to anybody in the school about bullying. And how often does school staff enforce substance abuse violations? High school sometimes, middle school never. My reason for bringing this out is that combined these issues create a recipe for disaster. Quite frankly, I'm, I'm glad that the, the town did not approve the additional $2 million because until this school committee and until this town starts investing in the safety and security of the students and teachers already in the school, nothing else matters. Nothing else matters. The fact that we have 76 middle schoolers engaging in self-harm and 57 considering suicide, we have a real problem here. And I can tell you from personal experience, on Tuesday, an ambulance was dispatched to the school. Terrifying situation. That ambulance was severely delayed because it couldn't get down the road. Because there's no cop there. There's never a cop there. Having a cop there not only ensures the safety of the kids and the parents because nobody abides by any of the rules and until it's enforced, it will continue to not be abided by. Kid, parents parking on crosswalks, you know, going down the one-way, the same old. And we just keep kicking the can down the road, the way it's always been, and nothing is resolved. You built this brand-new school, you put an office for an SRO in it, and to date, there's been no conversation about an SRO in our school. There's been no conversation about security in our school.
Uh, no, wait, let me stop you there. There has been security in our schools, so don't say that.
Where's the security? What security is in the school?
We're not, we're not supposed to ta, debate on public comment, and I'm struggling.
I'm still commenting, he asked me a question.
I'm struggling to not, to hold my tongue.
Well, I apologize, this is inconvenient for you, Mr. Hatch, but this is important information. You guys got these statistics a year ago. And what's been done?
And I would love for you to show me. I would love for you to show me how one SRO would prevent what you're talking about, cause it won't.
Because the teachers and the nurses are acting out of fear. They are acting out of fear. I know personally because I experienced it on Tuesday.
Wait, don't speak for the teachers and don't speak for the nurses.
I experienced this on Tuesday.
Do not speak for the teachers and do not speak for the nurses.
Okay, well, I'm speaking from my personal opinion of what happened to my student when an ambulance came to the school to take her out. No school lockdown, no coordination with a cop who doesn't exist at the top of the street. I come to these meetings, usually I'm the only one here, and I fight for these kids every meeting, for all of them. But this impacted me and my home. Enough is enough. You guys shouldn't get one red cent until you start fighting for the safety of these kids. Don't tell me to go speak to the chief of police, you go speak to the chief of police. You make it a priority.
Wait a minute, you don't even know what we do.
I do, I don't know?
No, you don't. How many times do you think I've spoken to the chief?
How many times?
No, you tell me, you just told me you know.
Well, I know, you, you've, you've told me three times. You've told me three times, and where, what progress have we made? What progress have we made?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Hogan, just, if you please wrap up so we can just move on, thank you.
Yeah, I'll wrap it up, this super minor comment, I'll wrap it up, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any more public comment out there?
Hi, guys.
Hi.
Joe Vecchione, 31, Womisadav. Thank you, guys, for, um, fighting for the school budget on Monday. Uh, thank you to the superintendent. So I was on town meeting 2022, 2023. I have one of those years when the last budget shortfall, uh, came. It was voted down by town meeting by a pretty substantial margin. And I know it was on the agenda, and you guys haven't really discussed, um, you know, what, what's on the table, what isn't on the table. But, you know, and again, a school, school committee is not really my, like, I was in town meeting. I know, uh, read, read all the budgets, but, you know, the, the process of school committee is, you know, something that I'm not really versed in. So I was just wondering what has historically been on the table and what hasn't been on the table because, you know, as a dad now, I have three kids under five years old. These, and, these cuts, you have a new perspective on these cuts. And, uh, what does that entail? What does education look like for my kids? Uh, these are decisions I'm making now, as my first one goes into, uh, goes into kindergarten this fall, so. You know, and, and just to kinda note, you know, on town meeting, I see it every spring, you know, it becomes town versus schools. There has to be a better way. And I don't know what that is, I don't know the answer. It's been going on for, I'm not picking on this administration, because it's been going on since I was a kid, 15 years ago when they, uh, when we went for an operational over, I failed and I saw it as a student. Uh, you know, the facilities, uh, the, the teachers cut, the classes cut, college prerequisites, uh, cut, and became harder for me to get into college. So, um, you know, as I send my kids or consider sending my kids to Saugus schools, which I want to as a, a product of Saugus schools, I just wanna know, you know, what's on the table, what hasn't been on the table. I understand that there's many discussions to be had with principals, the superintendent, between yourselves and with the public. But, you know, some historical information because I don't think I got that perspective, you know, three, four years ago at the last budget shortfall. I'm not asking you to go into depth, but, um, you know, and I know it's public comment, you're not supposed to really engage. But, you know, these would be things, and this, this is something that could be offline as well, and just kinda understand, um, you know, what, uh, what's next.
Yeah, no, I, I, I know we're gonna look at everything. I, I don't wanna say, yeah, we're gonna look at everything. But I don't think we're, I, I don't think we're in as bad a shape as, um, you would think, so. Um, and we can definitely take that, we can take it offline.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just so, so everybody's aware, I have met with the district leadership team probably four or five times over the last couple of weeks, and I met with the principals today to discuss this. So, with, the, it, plans are being formulated, but it's in the infancy stage and then we'd come to you and then you would give us your opinion as well, that's sort of the process.
Yeah, so it's not us just looking going, nope, 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 nope. Yeah, we definitely take the input from the, uh, the principals, leadership team.
Do you know how long that process usually takes? I, I, I think I've spoken to a couple, a couple of you, but I, you know, just...
Well, we'll, we'll, we've got the number. We'll sit with, Ms. Andrews will sit with the superintendent. And we'll look at, you know, when you look at it, so, it's still a million more than we had last year, right? And we've got costs that's gone up, we've got things we have to look at, busing, special ed, things like that. But, um, we'll, we'll look at everything, but I don't think, um, would, it's not gonna affect the education, that's all I wanna say.
Okay. So.
And timeframe, I'm sorry.
Huh?
Utilities is another big one.
Yeah.
Still the roof right now. Yeah, timeframe-wise, I know the, the year will start July 1st, so right now, we're on May 22nd. So by the end of June, this is when we're certainly gonna have to have a budget in place that we voted in public, so, within the next month.
Cool, so, we can take it offline, I can talk to you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe.
Good afternoon, uh, Kim Oliver, 25, Seegerd Ave.
Seegerd Ave?
Seegerd Ave.
I grew up on Serena Way.
You grew up there?
I grew, I grew up on Seegerd.
Um, I just quickly wanted to, um, touch upon, you know, not really touch upon it, what happened the other night and I, it's unfortunate that it didn't go through, and I appreciate everyone's hard work. Um, I just want to just kinda put the buzz in the air about, um, the importance of like each school having the right amount of staff and support, so on and so forth. Um, I have three young ones, um, and then one in the middle school. And, right now, I'm struggling a little bit at the Mount Belmonte. The staff that are there are wonderful, there just aren't enough. And, um, it's gotten to be a, a point where it's, you know, email after email after email, unanswered, and I, I always say I don't wanna be that parent, but I have to be that parent. Um, it's our job to protect. So I really want someone to look into, you know, the middle school is running great, the high school is running great, and, not, well, everyone says great, but, you know, we're all running, we are running, it's a train, right? So I always say that the problem with us is, with me at least, that I'm seeing right now in the middle school, because I, I do work over in the middle school, is that these kids are now rocks. So to chisel away at a rock is a lot harder. Belmonte, they're sponges. They are going to get every information we possibly can give them. By the time, and this is not just education, this is just respect, this is how to be a decent human being. And we don't have that support at the Belmonte right now. You know, it's, it's hard, and these kids are having these anxieties and having these depressions, and, uh, they're doing the best they can. I can't say anything wrong about anything going on in the Belmonte. What I can say is they're just not enough for the amount of children that are there.
So I, I would say, we don't, like, we like parents like you. No, because truthfully is, we, we don't, like, a lot of us up here don't know, unless we hear it from you guys, but we want the parent involved. We want, we want you bringing that stuff, this stuff to us. And I think, um, and I won't speak for Mr. Superintendent, but I think, I think we have a plan for the Belmonte. I, and I...
Mr. Chair, we do have a new principal coming in with a lot of ideas, so.
Yeah, who, I didn't get to sit on that one, but I, yeah, but I've heard great things about him. Um, my kids said that he went into the classrooms, which was wonderful. So I'm, I'm hoping and praying that this is it, um, that, you know, it does come into play. Again, that, just so I just keep telling, and I feel bad because these teachers are tired and they're exhausted and they're screaming at the kids, and then we're getting upset because they're screaming at the kids and people are out and trying to find a substitute and trying to deal with this fight and that fight. And I say in my head, oh, my gosh, nothing like this is happening at the middle school. And I, like, everything is kinda in play right now. But really, the Belmonte is the foundation of our kids. They need to be able to absorb all of that. And when we have teachers that are on edge because they are having a hard time, the kids are feeling that, and then they're coming home with it. And I, this year has been the worst year for my son with this new anxiety, and I'm like, where is my little boy? What happened? And it's just a high anxiety in the school. And so now I'm outsourced to pay therapy out of school, and it's a lot, it's a lot as a parent to see, okay, I, I wanna work over at the Belmonte now, but I'm over at the middle school, and I like it over at the middle school. But I just feel like, I, I love that there's a new principal coming in, hopefully he's it. But if there are any funds, any which way that we are gonna move around, possibly think about giving the Belmonte something a little extra to, to support all these young children and the ELL students and the special ed students and the everyday students that are struggling with everything going around, you know, around them.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, it's, it's hard because you teach, it, it's, it's not like the high school, middle school where you have classes and you can, you can structure students to classes. You've got...
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we have the co-op, we have the learning center, we have this, we have a little space outside where if the kids have a hard time, they cannot go out there. Um, you know, it, the response time in the middle and high school is, you know, a lot more efficient and it's, uh, you know, it's a school with a lot of kids. And, um, a lot of kids that are coming in with behaviors from, out of different communities and influencing. And it's, as parents, we all have to be a parent.
Well, as we, as we went to the neighborhood schools and moved all these kids into one school, it's hard because they're not with their friends. They could, you'd be in a classroom that they might know one or two people.
Yep, yep.
So, yeah, I think we've got a pretty good plan in place.
Mr. Chair, that was one of the things that was voiced throughout the search is to try to get the Belmonte to feel more like...
Yeah.
Smaller.
Yeah.
And I, and I, and I know the principal, the incoming principal ha, has some ideas for that. To try to make it feel, it's never gonna be back the way it was with the little neighborhood schools, but I know that he is, he heard that message loud and clear from parents and staff and everybody.
Yeah.
That has, that has been expressed.
Yeah. So I am, I'm very hopeful, both one person can do it all.
No, absolutely.
So that's why I'm like, if we have anything, so to really, you know, give them that extra support and, um, you know, I'm a firm believer is that, you know, these children that are on Fabolos, I E Ps, that kids that aren't have their own turn, type of learning dis, you know, learning style. And with that being said, one person cannot know, I mean, my daughter got called down to write an apology letter to a student. My daughter doesn't write, and no one knew that. How did you not know that? Cause there's too many kids and not enough support to be able to say, hey, come here. I really, uh, you know, oh, I know Maya, and I'm, I, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about this. So, um, it's been, it's been a long year at the Belmonte, I'm very, very hopeful for the, for the new person and that's all, just the support. And I, I know everyone here is for the same, you know, we're all here to support that. Um, I just wanted to voice that it, I am very passionate about it, so.
If, if, if you could, after the new principal starts, um, I think he's gonna have a meet and greet.
He is.
In the school starts, if you could come back and let us know, like, just keep updating us.
Yeah, absolutely.
I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Anyone have, you seen Tina? You don't have to apologize.
So, um, my comment is a thank you. So the bus situation at Oakland Vale, I was one of the people that was, I only talked to the school committee, I wanna leave with that. They were just, there were buses, we have games there, Noel Park.
Yeah.
The people were a little bit standoffish that drove the buses, which I was like, ah, you're not really supposed to park here, or whatever. So, uh, thanks for getting that situated for us. Also, I, uh, now have kids that are, like, younger and coming through the schools, and they're playing a lot of sports. So I'm a crazy advocate for sports in this town.
Yeah.
I think we got a great compliment from softball, that Saugus were the only one that has four teams at the player pitch level. So we're, like, the girl sports, they're coming up, we have a lot of teams. So I've been reaching out, trying to see if we could get some batting cages at Belmonte. Cause I feel like this is what we have, the rain, like, all the time.
Oh, you mean indoors?
Yeah, like an indoor batting cage, which some of the other towns have.
So, yeah, that was brought up to me, and, and, we, I know I talked to the athletic director.
Yeah, there, there is space down the end, so.
Yeah, so just an update is, so we, I, I, just to level set, I talked to Steph a little bit, and... Yeah, so just an update is, so we, I, just to level set, I talked to Steph a little bit and got some information. So there was a concern about insurance.
Yeah, liability.
The, each of the leagues carry their own insurance year round, it covers us wherever we practice, so if we practice indoors, outdoors, we're covered. We have the insurance search, we can get that to the school committee. And now I'm gonna look at how we're gonna get the cages, and then figure out how we'll get them done. I'll figure out all that stuff and we'll pull it back to you guys. But that would be great because then in the winter, we could practice, in the fall, we could practice.
So in the old, like, when my son played back in, I forget, he's twenty seven now, they had a, they had a batting cage in the, in the Belmonte that ran this way.
Exactly, yep.
So I, I forget how they did it, I think it was just.
We have it at the complex.
Yep. You have it at the complex?
Yeah, there is one at the complex, yeah.
We have one at the complex.
So why don't, well.
Well, I think the problem is we're, we're the youth, so like, baseball, softball, high school, then the majors get it, then we're like the bottom of the barrel.
No, 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 but what I'm saying.
We have a couple, and we might get a shot.
What I'm saying, if, 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 if it's something you wanna do at the Belmonte, I don't think we'd be versed in it. It's just a matter of, you, you'd know better than I do, working with facilities, how you'd have to go about it.
Yeah, yeah, we'd have to talk offline about that.
Yeah, and, and so the other piece too, and I know it's been talked about a little bit, is there's, so basketball's through youth and rec, but that's the only sport in town that's through youth and rec, everything else is independent. So there currently is a fee, a user fee, for like, if, if I wanted to take a practice at the Belmonte, I have to pay a user fee and a cleaning fee, but I think we're working on some stuff there.
We, we've got a meeting next week.
Cause it would be cool for like, if, as long as you're an affiliated SAGA sport, you, you don't have to pay that user fee. If, if I wanted to go to the gym with my friends to play basketball, then yeah, I'll pay, but.
Yeah, no, we're, we, we have a meeting next week, so.
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Santino? Anyone? Seeing no one, you have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purposes of discussing collective bargaining, not to return to open session with the five members of the school committee, the superintendent, Ms. McBride, anyone else? Ms. Andrews, someone else?
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye. The roll call, sorry.
Yes.
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 Yes.